Let's see what we can do. We'll call the November 6th meeting of the Board of Appeals to order. And the first case we have on the agenda tonight is case number 1421 on the petition to John Cormier. Is the petitioner here?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me go ahead and go through the legal descriptions and then we'll get to it. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing in the selectman's meeting room at the town hall, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts on Thursday, November 6th, 2014 at 7:00 PM on the petition of John Cormier, who seeks a variance under sections 5.0 and 5.1.2 of the zoning bylaws in order to construct an addition farmer's porch six feet by 26 feet in the front of the dwelling with a setback of 17.8 feet rather than the required 20 feet on the property located at 22 Elliott Street in Reading, Massachusetts. Unless there is an objection, I will dispense with the reading of the abutters list, except to say that the abutters were notified, as were the following. Board of Selectmen, Town Clerk, Police Department, Fire Department, Building Department, Conservation Commission, Health Department, Assessors Office, Engineering Division, CPDC, members and associate members of the Board of Appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, Linfield, North Reading, Stonem, Woburn, and Wilmington. Excuse me. Testimony given before this board is taken under oath. So if you think you may want to speak tonight, please stand and raise your right hand. And that's the petitioner, too, if you're going to speak. Okay, you should stand and, yeah, I'll swear you in. I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. Response is I do. Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, the floor is yours if you'd like to give us a synopsis of what you're looking to do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'm not sure if anybody saw the round of emails that went around earlier between myself
Yes.
and town staff, but it seemed to have been the opinion of town staff that the building inspector misquoted the applicant's prayer for relief, and as such, the posting doesn't meet the building inspector's denial.
Okay.
And so I am of the opinion, and I think town staff agrees, that unfortunately, we're not going to be able to hear this case tonight.
Really? Now, I was of, I saw your memorandum, David, and I was of the opinion, yes, he asked for variance, and it was for frontage, but also, he requires a side because the, he encroaches onto the side.
Correct.
Now, whether that requires a variance or not, I think that's discussion because he isn't increasing, I don't believe he's increasing the non-conformity on the side. But then, on the other hand, too, I believe he is increasing his footprint to increase it over 25 percent. So it's, when I looked at it, it looked like it could be two variances and a special permit is required. I look at it as it was advertised for a variance, which is the worst-case scenario, and I thought we could still hear it. But I would certainly hear other members' opinions, and I know John's been on the board for a long time and has gone through this before, when something's been advertised one and we had to hear it another way. John?
Well, in the past, we've had individuals show up who were immediate abutters. So the immediate abutters would have known that the side yard was involved in this whole process, too. But there doesn't appear to be any, any other members of the neighborhood here this evening. And that makes it somewhat of a question as to which way we should move, because if, what you really want to do is you want to bring the people out who may have some input into this, especially in the neighborhood.
Especially who wants an impact, better impact.
Correct. But we don't have that this evening, or it doesn't appear to be have that this evening. I mean, I don't see anybody in the audience. The question is, can we move on? Now, I do concur with you. This setback issue on the side yard may not be a variance. It may be a special permit, or at least a special permit finding
Right.
that we can move forward on. But I didn't catch the 25 percent, and that is, if you calculated that out, that is definitely
Well, I think it's on the plot plan, 26 point, would I have it down? 26.12 percent, which is over the 25 percent, too. So I think that would, you know, just to cover it every, all bases, you'd probably want to give a variance on that, too.
Well, from a statutory standpoint, the notice is the application upon which this board would vote. So the notice being admittedly by the, by town staff defective, I think that the application is something that we would not be allowed to vote on to give the applicant complete relief because of the defect in the notice. That's, again, that's my opinion. We just found out about it when I noticed it this afternoon in
Yeah.
preparing for tonight and reading the building inspector's note. I did bring it to Maureen's attention, and she had a discussion with staff, and I think we saw her, her response. After discussion with her, for instance, what if we give this, what if we vote this application down? Does the applicant then have grounds to bring another application for a variance for the separate issue, whether or not it's a variance for the side yard setback or the lot coverage area?
Mm-hmm.
So I think we would be denying the applicant full and fair right to access if we acted on this with a defect in the notice. My opinion.
I think that David is technically correct in that, in
And I don't want to be. Please understand that.
Believe me, we don't like to drag these out. We would much rather hear it tonight, you know?
I would, I would have been much more amenable to be, to at least look at it and get it started, open it up tonight, if there were some, somebody here from the neighborhood, especially the immediate abutter to the
Yeah.
to the north.
And once we open it, we
We limit ourselves in terms of time.
Yeah.
So if there are further extensions, we would have possibly a problem, too.
So we do that. Kathleen, do you have any opinion on this?
I think I would agree with David, yeah.
You would? Okay. Si?
I think, you know, you've got three things now. You've got, he needs a variance on the frontage. He needs a variance on the lot coverage, which isn't anywhere in this application either.
Yeah.
And, I mean, if it wasn't for, if it wasn't for the frontage, I mean, the lot size, I mean, I could rationalize my way into saying, okay, I mean, the side setback is 12 now, it's going to stay 12 now. It almost goes inherently with the front, with the farmer's porch, okay, the fact you're extending it, but you're extending
Mm-hmm.
an existing non-conformity.
Yeah.
So to me, the cleanest way to do it would be to not address it tonight and then come back and make, and pick up all those pieces. Let's look at it as one well, one fell swoop.
Because, because the town made the mistake.
That makes it nice and clean for him, makes it clean for everybody, okay? And we're complying with the, with the rules of the game.
Keep in mind
I mean, to David's point, if we act on it tonight and grant him the variance, or don't grant him the variance.
It would have to be re-advertised.
It's going to have to be re-advertised, but can he come back and ask for that variance on the frontage in the future, or does he have to wait a period of time? Maybe he could ask for a variance on the side, he could ask for a variance on the lot size, but can he come back and ask for a second shot at the variance on the front? I don't know. What's the answer to that?
What you're asking for, I think, what David is asking for, is to not hear this, have it re-advertized, get it done correctly, so that this, in essence, even though we started, we really haven't heard the case.
No, we haven't heard the case.
Correct.
So we haven't moved forward to officially opening it
Correct.
other than what was advertised, and the board made a decision following what to do.
Eric, you have thoughts on this?
Oh, I, I think the smart move is to just re-advertize
Yeah.
and deal with it all at once.
Okay, okay.
I think it's in your best interest to do it that way, too.
Yeah, I don't know what the petitioner's schedule was to go, go ahead and, you know, think you could start construction this winter on this, or were you planning on starting in the spring anyway?
If he says that the house is done, I'll just wait for the front.
Yeah, yeah. Well, as you see, we, you know, we see this and brought up by a member that, you know, was advertised wrong, and obviously, it appears to me, when I looked at it, that you needed three things. You needed a variance on your front, needed a variance on your footprint of the building, takes up more than 25 percent of the lot area
Yeah.
with the, with the thing. And then you're also extending that front porch that you're looking to do, the proposed porch, into the side yard setback, not any more than what you already are.
Right.
But it is into the side yard setback, less than 15 feet. That portion of it would most likely require a special permit, if we were to do it correctly. So
So where do I go from here? Do I go back to talk to Glenn?
We will have to talk to Glenn and have it re-advertized and put on the agenda. It looks now we could, let's see.
December 6th?
Yeah, we might have to be able to get it done by December 6th then, if we do it that way.
So I think as a matter of procedure
Yeah.
we should entertain a motion to withdraw the present case, to allow him to go back and start essentially from, from scratch with the re-advertising
Okay.
and
Yeah.
reapplication, essentially. I don't believe it's, I don't think it's anything fee-wise that you're going to have to start from scratch with. I think you're just going to
It's, it's the town's
When you go back and talk to Glenn and to the town, we're going to explain to them what we think you need, and they're going to amend the publication, the notice, in your application, so that it covers the entire application that you're seeking, so we can hear it, it can be published correctly, the right people can be notified, and that way, nobody has any question as to whether or not the process was handled correctly, most, most certainly yourself.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, well, that sounds, and the petitioner sounds agreeable to this recommendation. So you think we need a withdrawal from the petitioner
I think so.
to withdraw this particular case, and then we will re-advertise the amended, you might say, the amendment to case 1421, and hopefully, we'll get that done for, in time for the December 6th.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, so if you can make, can you make a formal request to withdraw this case, and we will prepare an amendment to it?
I think
So be. Okay. Do I hear a motion from a board member on that?
I'll move to accept the petitioner's application to withdraw, to amend.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Second from Kathleen. All those in favor?
Am I voting today? Am I voting today? I'm not sure.
Uh, no, I think it's just the five of us.
Yeah.
Five here, 5-0-0.
Yep.
Okay, so we will go ahead and prepare this, and David, I'm going to have to ask you then, can you follow up on this since I won't be around for the next couple of weeks?
Glenn's on vacation
Yeah.
for a week, but, of course he is, it's hunting season.
Yeah, I know.
But I'll follow up with town staff
Yeah.
and, and move it forward for you.
Great. Amen, amen. You saw what I was getting, if you want, I can leave you my notes on it, but you saw what I was getting at when I talked about the special permit
Yes.
might be required for the side, the front, and then also for lot coverage, you know?
Yeah.
So that's what it appeared to me, yeah. Okay, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Sorry.
Okay, let me
I want to get it right, though.
Write a little note on this.
Bob, if you think I need anything
Mm-hmm.
from your file in order to move that forward, I'm happy to take it.
Yeah, no, those are the three biggest things. I, it's, you know, some other issues there, too, but
That's fine.
Next case we have on the agenda tonight
Okay.
is a
I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, Kathleen's going to recuse herself from this one.
I don't think there's on anything after.
Yeah.
There's nothing on after that, right?
No, there is not. Nope, so you're, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, you've got a
Coming.
Do we need to write anything up on that withdrawal?
On the withdrawal? I don't think, you know what I would do in that particular case, I think, is just maybe when we write up the final decision for the case, and I'm assuming we're not going to change the case number.
Yeah, you probably should.
I think you would, right?
Yeah, okay.
I think they're probably going to.
Then we're going to have to write something up.
We're going to have to close this one.
Just a simple statement.
Just a simple statement.
Just a, one, like a, you know?
Yeah.
All right.
Just a simple paragraph, thank you.
All right, I'll write it off.
Yeah, a simple paragraph saying
Yeah, we've done it before.
kind of explaining what we did because
Why we did it.
we have to expand.
Just so they could put it in the file
Right.
more likely.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, next case is a continuation of case number 1420. I see the petitioner is here. I don't believe I have to read the legal notice and go through everything again, since this is just a continuation, and we will reopen the case. And this particular one, I believe we were looking for additional information, a new plot plan.
Yes.
And we did get that from the surveyor, and I think we got some additional information, too, letters of support on that, yeah. Would you care to take the floor, then?
Good evening. I'm without Jack Sullivan's seat, and he had a conflict at, he had a dispute somewhere, so basically, as you correctly pointed out, at the end of the last meeting, there were some changes to the structure by the engineer, and there was a small difference at the back, and so Jack Sullivan remeasured everything. So we're actually at the back of the garage with 2 pints, 2 feet more, I think. I think the, the last time I was here, I think we were
Right, right, the
10 feet from the
The tool shed there, they call it.
Yeah.
And then, well, the closest point now is 11.2 feet.
Yes.
And it was 10.3 before.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is shifted a bit, and you gained almost another foot there.
That's correct.
Yeah. And I believe there was a, yeah, I'm better with that. Any questions from board members on this? Eric, I will start with you tonight on this one.
He did view the video.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, he did the video? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I submit this to you.
Okay.
It's a certified occasion for some of the general laws
Right.
chapter 31, section 23D.
We'll put that in the
Where I certify that I have viewed the evidence related to this case
Okay, thank you.
and thereby competent comment on it.
We will put that in the file.
Okay.
Case file.
So in reviewing what had happened at the, at the last meeting here, I, I see that you have submitted this revised plot plan here with reduced dimensions in keeping with the, where the board was, was going with that the last time. I think that, I note that you had 32 feet, it was 26 by 32 feet, it is now 26 by 25 feet. Also, in the back here, you've reduced it, looks like even further.
Hmm.
So now we've got 12.2 in the back left corner there. So, oh dear. Incoming call.
(laughing)
So, I mean, I have no further comment, other than to note that
Don't answer it.
you tried to comply with, with what the board was looking for.
It might be your wife.
Yeah. Yeah. No, no. Si?
Well, we went through this quite, pretty well on the last one, and I
Yes.
my comment then, and I'll say it again, is I thought petitioner did a heck of a job thinking this whole thing through and coming up with what he did, and I think it fits the neighborhood very well. I have no problem with it whatsoever, and the plot plan now makes things a little better than they were before, so I don't have any further questions.
Okay. John?
Well, I see the changes that were, that were made. Basic change that I see is that the, the storage area in back of the garage has been moved to the side, so you picked up another roughly 2 feet. The corner of the garage appears to be the same as it was before, which is about 11.2 feet, which is what I had calculated out before. So that hasn't moved. The 14.7, which is the front side of the garage, hasn't moved either.
And it's changed, yeah.
So I think the biggest thing that came out of our, our discussion perhaps last week was, number one, there appears to be some justification in what the applicant is trying to accomplish. He does have a significant personal involvement with the need for this. And then the other issue was the correction that we needed on the certified plot plan to verify exactly where we were at, so I think that has, has now been accomplished.
Nothing for me.
Nothing.
Yeah, we covered it pretty well last time.
Yeah, I think we, I think we did, and we were just looking to, I think, the last time, we discussed it quite a bit, and number one, as we get towards the end there, we would, wanted to get the plot plan to agree with what the architectural plan had shown there in regards to the tool, tool shed there in the back, the tool area. I don't have any particular issues with it. I look at the four criteria that's required, and I certainly think his lot here is certainly encumbered by the wetlands there. It looks, it looks to me, it's almost like he loses half the use of his lot due to, due to the wetlands in the back there, yeah, on that. Maybe not a half, but a third of his lot anyway there, and you see the no structure zone in the back, which extends quite a bit, almost up to the back of his house, and hardships. I, I, I think certainly he could meet all four criteria of the variance on that, my personal opinion. There's no further discussion by board members. I would entertain a motion then on this case.
Well, I started to do one last time, so
Okay.
I'll finish it up. I would move to grant the petitioner a variance under sections 5 and 5.12 of the zoning bylaw to add a two-car garage to the left side of the structure with a proposed side setback of 11.2 feet rather than the required 15-foot bylaw requirement on the property located at 31 Curtis Street in Reading, in accordance with plot plan of land prepared and certified by John Sullivan, by Sullivan Engineering Group dated October 17, 2014. And I think there's a couple of architectural drawings, too.
Yes, there is.
A3, A1 through 3 dated September 2nd, which we should make reference to.
Right. Stephen Bazak?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
I think that's all we need to add, right?
Do we need to call out the 14.7-foot dimension in this variance as well?
I think if we make reference to the plot plan, that covers it.
That covers it all.
Usually, we tend to make reference to the minimal
The worst case.
setback.
Okay.
Which is the 11.2 in this case, yeah.
I think that was the only thing that Si was missing.
Was the
Was the minimum
The setback as shown
Okay, all right, all right.
in the plot plan, 11.2 feet.
We'll add that.
So if you can amend that, then just note
Okay.
the setback as shown in the plot plan
Okay.
of 11.2 feet. Okay? That's it. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Eric. All those in favor of the motion? Any further discussion, I guess? No further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Raise your hand. All those oppose? Nobody. Let the record show, 5-0-0 on that. You have your variance. That'll be written up. We have 14 days to write that up and submit that to the town clerk, then that'll be recorded at the registry of deeds, and you should be all set then after that, hopefully. Okay, Si, will you write that up, then?
I will, and I'll send it to you.
If you would. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Oh, okay, let me, I got some plans here. Let me stamp these plans, I almost forgot, and we'll give you a copy of that, and then I'll stamp the other ones, and you'll have a record of what we granted tonight. Very good, for your record on that one there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. And, well, let me do these here. I don't believe we have any other business tonight. Anybody have any thoughts, like to bring anything up? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Very good, thank you.